Okay, good evening and welcome to the August 19th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda tonight, we have public service announcements. Second agenda item we're pulling, it was a joint meeting with the Tantascor School Committee. However, the one candidate has withdrawn her name, so we will be re-advertising and setting up a meeting probably later in September or the beginning of October. Okay, then we have some permits and applications. One-day liquor license, extension of existing parameters, Baba Sushi, a special one-day liquor license, Norcom Mortgage, taxi delivery license renewal, Charles River Service, Inc., a special one-day liquor license, Altruis Brewing Company. We have department reports, water and sewer, conservation, town administrator's report. Then we have some action items, concur with an appointment for the outreach coordinator, accept donation from Richard Kaufman into the police youth account, accept resignation of the Public Works Administrative Assistant, discussion on allocation of vacation time, painting bids for the Joshua Hyde Library, contracts for re-evaluation service, concur with appointments to the DPW, new business, correspondence, I skipped old business, oh, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes from August 5th, Citizens' Forum, and we do have a request for executive session, and then we shall adjourn. Any public service announcements, Priscilla? No.
Chase?
None.
Mike?
None.
Mira?
I just have one before the concert this Thursday. We're going to have lawn games for families, actually anybody, from 3:30 to 5:30 on the Town Common. So it's going to be pre-concert lawn games, cornhole, that type of thing. Children cannot be left, it's a family event, but there'll be members of staff as well as the Special Events Committee kind of overseeing the lawn games.
Yes, it was a request on the announcement that parents be there with their children.
Oh, thank you. And I don't know, were you, did you have, were you going to make the same announcement?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, good.
Because I knew you would.
All right.
Okay, so we shall skip over that. So next we have requests from Baba Sushi. Is there a representative here? Hi, could you please come down?
Yeah.
Good evening, could you please introduce yourself?
I'm Sarah Galan, I'm the journal manager.
Okay. We have your name and everything, the mic is for the people watching TV.
Oh, okay. All right, perfect.
Okay, do you want to just give a brief explanation then for the audience?
Yes, definitely. So we're, this is our third annual fire and ice party. We are expecting probably anywhere between 300 and 500 people throughout the night. It's 5:00 to 10:00 PM. This year, we actually wanted to allow for people to go out onto the lawn area that will be roped off so that they can have drinks out there. Those drinks will be separately purchased in the lawn area only for the lawn. They'll be in special glasses, which will help us to decipher what is inside versus what is outside. There'll be signs posted everywhere for people to know that they're not allowed to take drinks inside and/or outside, and that way we can keep tabs on where they're going. Everybody will be ID-checked, wrist-banded, there will also be a couple of vendors there. We're looking for possibly Bay State Brewing, as well as Western Sun, who's a Horizon liquor. They'll be giving out samples, but our bracelets, I brought one so you guys could see it, they're tabbed with four tabs. So people are only allowed to have the amount of samples that the tabs allow. They will not be able to get any samples if they don't have a wristband. We ran a party similar to this in Worcester last night, and it ended up being really, really successful. I also brought a copy of our Worcester one-day liquor license, in case you guys wanted to see that for reference.
And the hours?
5:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Okay, now the lawn is Baba Sushi lawn, right?
Yes.
Okay, questions from the board, Priscilla?
Does this have police approval? I don't see the signature.
Well, I'm surprised.
All of them, none of them have.
Yeah, but we never used to have that on, because we don't usually involve the police other than traffic control, like when Hamilton Rodden Gun Club has their big events. It's more the traffic control, not the license, because it's up to the Board of Selectmen to give the license.
So, in this situation, it was kind of different for us, because she's just asking to go on the lawn, so the chief kind of didn't sign off on it first, because he was speaking to the ABCC. The other ones, why they're not signed are because they came in this week and he was on vacation.
So when you say he was speaking to the, may I?
Oh, sure.
Because you said he was speaking to the ABCC, is there a reason?
Well, because they already have a liquor license, the question was...
Do they need another one?
Right.
I get it, okay, thanks.
Yeah, because it's, normally, they're not changing the premise for a long time, otherwise we would have to have a public hearing on that and everything. But on a one-day liquor license, because it's their own property, I believe they can get the extended with permission from the licensing board, which is the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
Any other questions?
But he's also been on vacation, the chief, so that's why the other ones aren't signed.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, could we, not now, but sometime, look back at the other permits, because we've never, it's only come up lately about the police chief, and we've never, like I say, involved unless it had to do with traffic. Okay, Mike?
Yeah, my first question is, you know, I see on your map you're going to have a fire pit.
Yes.
And have you talked to the fire department at all about this event?
Every year, we, well, actually, last year was the first year we actually had the fire pit in the front yard. It's just like an above-ground fireplace. We cover it up with a screen mesh container so that there's no flames flying anywhere, and they did issue a permit for us to have the fire on the lawn last year. We also have fire dancers, so we have to have a special permit for that as well. We just wanted to come early enough to speak with you guys about the outdoor liquor license.
And the other thing that kind of came up a little bit was, I presume like last year you make arrangements for parking, because you're going to have 300 people.
Yes. We have, we rent the lot behind the Southbridge Steel Works, and there, we have 44 spots back there. We usually put on extra valet that night, probably about four valet drivers, because people will line up in their cars, and we want to be able to be efficient about it and be able to get them out of there. So we're definitely going to take care of that.
No, your explanation on what you're doing is very well-written and appreciated.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sure. Mira?
I think it's a great idea, I know it was successful last year. Are you going to the chief, the fire chief again over the fire pit or not?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, we want to make sure that everything's good, all of our paperwork is in order before we have a party like that, just in case, we want to make sure everybody's protected, so.
So when they get the arbor, and how many, how many samples do they get? You said it has to be pun.
It has to be four, and we talked to our reps previous to this happening, so that people aren't, you know, going and getting a full shot of vodka. We don't want people to be intoxicated, we just want for them to be able to try some of the samples from the local distributors, and then we will be selling.
So will they get four shots of vodka or not?
No, they do, they do like very small sample sizes, just more for the experience of trying the different stuff, and then for the beer, a little bit more, just because the alcohol content is a lot lower. Yeah.
Great.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone willing to make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll make a motion that we approve a one-day liquor license to Baba Sushi as set forth in their application, and pending approval by the fire chief for the fire pit.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want me to leave the Worcester permit with you for reference?
You could, please. Okay, next we have a one-day liquor license request from Norcom Mortgage. Kristen Walther.
Yeah, actually, I'm Donna Forty, I'm representing Kristen tonight, I'm her office manager at Norcom.
Okay, would, for the audience at home, would you please explain what it is you'd want to do?
Okay, we do, well, last year was our first year doing our annual customer and employee appreciation party. We do this in the back lot of our establishment at 135 Main, it's at the Maple Hill Plaza, we do it in the back parking lot. So we set up a tent with, you know, BT's is going to be there hopefully again, doing our catering, and we supply Treehouse Brewing Company for local vendors in Sturbridge. We do invite all of our clients, referral partners and colleagues, as well as our employees and coworkers from our corporate office in Avon, Connecticut to join us, and we basically are there from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, and that's basically it.
Yeah, it does say 4:00 to 8:00, but...
Okay, actually, she, we put, I wasn't sure, because I didn't actually fill in the application, somebody dropped it off to Andrea when I was on vacation, so I filled in most of it, but the time, she said was about 4:00 to 7:00, but it probably will run until 8:00 o'clock. It did run a little over last year, so we started a little earlier this year, so it would end a little bit earlier in the evening.
Right, and to the best of my knowledge, we had no complaints, problems last year.
Yeah, we had a really good time, we had a good turnout. We're expecting about 50 to 100 people, we don't know yet exactly how many, based on our RSVPs, we haven't obviously put it out there yet, based on this meeting, so.
Questions from the board?
We invite all of our neighbors and anybody in the town to come as well, we put it out as an open event for everybody to join us.
Questions from the board? Sure.
Employee appreciation days are really important. I just, I just want to commend Norcom Mortgage for, you know, showing appreciation to your employees.
Thank you, my boss is very generous in that way, she does a lot for us.
And it's important, because, you know, it's, Sturbridge is a nice town to live in and to work in, and it's, it's good that our employers show appreciation for their employees.
Thank you, I will let her know you mentioned that, thank you for that comment, appreciate it.
Okay, is someone...
It was well-deserved to her, she's very good with the community.
Someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Norcom Mortgage, in accordance with the application.
Right, September 26th, 4:00 to 8:00.
4:00 to 8:00 PM, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you so much, we hope you all can join us. Join us if you want to.
You're all set? Okay. Thanks, guys, bye.
Okay, next we have taxi.
Two minutes.
Livy license renewal, Charles River Service, Inc., for Michael James. Is anybody here from?
He was supposed to come, I said he was coming.
Well, it's not a new license, it's just a renewal. He was, two years, I believe, he's been doing it. Does anyone have any question on the application or anything? Bless you.
God bless you. Do you not have to fill out the proposed vehicle? I know some...
Yeah, we always get that information, his license is here, is the vehicle ID and all that, did he submit that?
We'll make sure we get it before we issue the license.
Yeah, we can put a contingent on that.
And hours of operation? Some of it's blank?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Yeah, and I'd, I'd make it contingent upon the police chief's approval.
Yeah, he always does these.
He's on vacation now, so I would, rather than hold it up, I would...
Yeah, we can approve a contingent.
Contingent upon police chief signing the application.
Okay, somebody willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application for taxi cab delivery license for Michael James, contingent upon identification of the vehicles, and the police chief signing the application form.
And hours of operation, too.
Oh, the hours of operations? Yeah, that's right, are they on here?
No, so just...
Oh, yeah, contingent upon, did we specify which hours of operations we want?
No.
Or that are on, same hours of operation as on the last, the original license.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, next we have a special one-day liquor license, Altruis Brewing Company. Good evening.
Hi.
Okay, would you explain, please, for the audience, what it is you'd like to do?
So this is our first time doing this, we're looking to do an outdoor event in our parking lot, right outside our brewery, and have a band playing an outdoor concert from, the event is 12:00 to 6:00, which is our normal operating hours, the band will be there 1:00 to 5:00, and we'll also have a food truck. Woody's Chuck Wagon, from where?
Where?
Yes.
Cool joke around, yeah.
Now, is the parking, do you own the parking lot?
The landlord does.
The landlord does, but you don't per se?
No.
No. We don't own anything.
No, you rent.
Yeah.
Well, he's fully on board with us, closing the back parking lot off for that one day, though.
Yeah, so we'll rope off the section that we're going to use.
Okay, I, when this first came up, I did have questions, because you do have a license for the existing premise, and this is now moving outside that existing premise onto one that you don't own. Different case than Baba Sushi, they're going on their own lawn, so I don't really know from ABCC if that makes a difference, to get a one-day liquor license on another premise.
We can find out?
Yeah.
Yeah. It is different than Baba Sushi, we probably want something from the landlord, too.
Landlord.
That's what I was going to request, I mean, I totally believe that, you know, just for the records that...
Absolutely.
So he doesn't come in and say, "I had no idea what they were doing."
Yeah, no, he's excited for it.
Okay, anything else from the board, Priscilla?
Is that the same week as flea market?
It is.
It is. I personally think the police chief needs to see this.
For traffic.
The traffic is a nightmare without anything else, and if it's the same week, that presents an issue, a major issue.
On Sunday, if that makes a difference.
Doesn't matter, the traffic is heavy, and when the flea market's in, the traffic is crazy.
Yeah, it's a little less on Sunday, because most things close down, but still, there's traffic.
This, this is the eighth, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, still. Especially what 300 people expect it.
We have really no idea, because we've never...
I understand that, but even 100 parking, traffic.
Now, if we do approve, we can, you know, we require police, police presence for direct helping with traffic flow?
We certainly can, we can.
We certainly, first of all, need to find out if we can give a one-day...
Can do it, right.
...on another premise, because usually if you have a liquor license, it's for the premise only, unless you get an extension of the premise, which this isn't really...
Can it be, I, I don't know the rules, can it be an extension?
Well, no, an extension would be if you were maybe going to put a patio on, and you wanted to serve liquor out there, you'd have to go through the whole process of a public hearing, and applying, and having an, you know...
Oh, you mean like permanent?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, no, this is just a one-day.
No, so, but we need to clarify that, but if somebody would like to make a motion...
I'll make a motion to grant them a special one-day liquor license, contingent upon the police chief and the ABC findings of the premise.
Are you willing to add something from the landlord?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Are you willing to add police presence for traffic control?
Yeah, control.
If that's what the police chief thinks, you know, if the police chief feels that it's okay without it, then I don't, I don't let him decide that.
Well, we can decide it, too.
Yeah, I, I would make that, personally, I would like to see that as a condition.
I see no problem with it, because it's a dangerous driveway to begin with, with the angle and the hill and everything, so. So would you be willing to tack on that stipulation?
Yeah, I'll tack that on.
Yes.
Okay, do we miss anything?
I think that's, yeah, I, yeah, I, you know, if, if the police chief approves it, and we get the landlord, a letter or acknowledging, or that the landlord approves it, I see no problem with the license.
And a police detail.
And a police detail.
And, yeah, as, as appropriate, I mean, the police chief will ultimately have to decide, you know, what type of detail is required, so.
Right, but we can require a detail.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we have, we have that authority.
Okay, is there a second then?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, so hopefully it goes smoothly.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Oktoberfest in September.
Okay, next we have a special use permit from Big Allen. Okay, it's for a canoe kayak event, 16 boats.
Where am I missing here?
October 26th. Okay, people, the boats will be arriving at 8:00 AM, start time is 9:00 AM, and return is 15:00. It should be 3:00, right?
Hmm? Oh, okay, that's here.
We've had this request a couple of years.
I checked with recreation and special events, and there's nothing else going on that day.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is there a motion? Is there a move? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have department reports, water and sewer, Shane.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good, and you?
Good.
How are things going?
We're busy, I'm sure you're all aware. I turned in the operating reports for June and July, I'll start with any questions you have on those.
In July, Shane, I noticed there were 13 emergency repairs, nine of which were the nine E1 grinder pumps?
That's correct.
Is that high?
And now we seem to go in spurts, we'll have a month or so, or three weeks or so, we don't have any, and then all of a sudden, we get a bunch in a row, that seems to be the way it works, so no, it's not anything we haven't seen in the past.
Okay. Questions from the board?
When was the water break on Route 20 across from the truck stop?
So that was a...
August.
A 12-inch main break, the main was really deep, and from what I told, because I wasn't there, the soil was, it's like oily and smelly, and you're right across the street from the truck stop, and it ate right through the pipe. I've been doing this 28 years, I've never seen that. So we cut out the bad section and fixed it, and I know it took a while, and I know people get upset that, you know, it's taken us that long to fix it, but when we're down that deep, our first priority is keeping our people safe, and that's what we're going to do, and when you get a big main break like that, and everyone thinks that it broke at 6:00, 6:30 in the morning, but skater trending shows us that it probably broke about 4:30 in the morning, so it's running that whole time until we get out there to shut it off, which makes everything a big muck mess, and just makes the job that hard, much harder to complete, so, you know, in the past five, six years, we've been lucky, we've had one break a year, if that, and unfortunately, this year, you know, we've had three, and all three times, in my opinion, it's because the pipe's in unsuitable conditions.
Yeah, because they're not the oldest pipes in town.
No, not at all. I believe the one on Hall Road, from my research and talking to the first project manager here from back then, I don't even know what it was called, the OS, he said, right when we took over, which was like '88, '89, they had just got done putting that line in, and I believe the line going up to Route 20 was for those buildings, and then for the Walmart project.
Yeah.
It's ductile iron pipe, I mean, it's the strongest pipe out there, so, you know, we don't like them either, but they're going to happen.
Okay, questions? Board comments?
Yeah, I, yeah, is there any way of checking to see, sometimes when ductile iron pipe corrodes like that, it's, the ductile iron has been, is effectively being a sacrificial anode to some stray currents, is there any way to have the, the power company check to see if there, if that might be a problem?
We can certainly put in a phone call, and I, and I did think of that, because in a disimilar metals thing, but most of the buildings over there, and I don't know the whole history, it's fairly new, so you would think the electric code would be up to date, and that wouldn't be an issue, but we can certainly reach out to the electric company and see what they have to say, but based upon what I was told about the soil conditions, I'm going to go with that was the issue, but I don't think it's not going to hurt us to look in, you know, contact National Grid and ask them how we can look into that, so I will take care of that.
Can you explain what you just asked, because I didn't understand.
Oh, well, sometimes, sometimes when pipe, ductile iron pipe fails, it is due to soil conditions. In New England, the exterior of the pipes are always coated with, with a material to prevent corrosion, but sometimes that's not enough, so that's one possibility of why the pipes are failing. I mean, we've had similar failures three times this year, so it's, it's a prob, it could be a problem in the future, so...
But what about National Grid, that was the question.
Okay, the, the other thing is, the other possibility is that, that the, there could be a very small current going through the pipe, because ductile iron pipe will conduct, and, and these pipes are usually grounded many times to the electric system, so sometimes if there's a, a small current going through the pipe, that pipe will act as an anode that, that the metal is sacrificed and, and is essentially destroyed. That's, when you talk about cathodic protection systems, you always have an anode that's sacrificial, a most common thing, one that many people will know about is in their house, their water heater, there's an anode in the water heater that is, you know, sacrificed if the, if there's a corrosive situation in the water tank.
Now, was the explanation, the latter, that there's a, what current that's running through, would it be National Grid's obligation to repair?
I guess so.
Or to reimburse us for a...
It would depend on what the source of the problem was, if they could even tell us. Now, we know that's not the issue on Hall Road, because that's a plastic pipe, but he makes a valid point, but I still, and we'll look into it, but I really believe it's the soil conditions.
Yeah.
Any other?
So just, I want to give you an update on the PFOS testing, that's scheduled for next week, I spoke to the DEP today about it. We also started last week the UCMR4 testing, which is unregulated contaminant testing being done by EPA, so we're round four, and round three, this is where the PFOS testing came from, so, one thing I asked the DEP today to look into was to see if we were covered under the UCMR4. So one thing I, I asked the DEP today to look into was to see if we were covered under the UCMR four testing, because that's free. The PFOS testing, we have to pay for. So I should have an answer. He said he was gonna get back to me tomorrow on that. But that, it is scheduled, and if, and if it's not covered, we will be doing that sampling. We are teetering on the point of the water ban. I think we are one number over, but we keep getting the rain. Just enough time to stay out of it. We got some rain today. We could go into it tomorrow, it could be the day after, but we're getting pretty close. And that's pretty much all I have for you this evening.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay, next we have conservation. Good evening, Rebecca. How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. Nice report.
Thank you. Did I kinda highlight you?
Please, for the audience.
All right, so Conservation Department comes once a year, so this report kind of goes over different filings and projects that we've worked on in the past year. So to start, we've seen a change in our board. We have a new member on our board. We also have a new administrative assistant in our office. Within the past year, we switched our meetings to Tuesdays versus Thursdays, which has been working out for us. No real concerns with that or any issues from the public. For our project filings, as you know, we review projects under the Wetlands Protection Act, and we have a local wetland bylaw. We also review forest cutting plans and other projects. Since July of two thousand and eight, we reviewed twenty-seven notice of intents, sixteen requests for determinations of applicability, two notices of resource area delineations, and all of those filings are state filings that we review under DEP for the Wetlands Protection Act. We had sixty-six letter permit applications. Those are smaller filings, could range from small house additions in the outer buffer zone, tree removal, small things that don't require the full extensive filing through the state, which also requires legal add-to-butter notification, so it's kind of a simplified process. We can still review the project, make sure it's not gonna impact the resource area. In addition to that, we reviewed five forest cutting plans, and those we look at, kind of through the Department of Conservation and Recreation, we're required to, well, the applicants are required to send it to us and take a look at and provide comment to the forester, so they don't have to go through the Wetlands Protection Act, provided they, they have this approved forest cutting plan. We do look at it under our local bylaw, and then also with the towns harvesting bylaw, so five of those this year. Just some of the filings that we did see this year for our notice of intents, some commercial projects, a new commercial development was previously permitted within one of our industrial parks, did change a little bit in ownership, so that was re-reviewed. We have the campground redevelopment, seven new single-family houses that were approved, just two razing rebuilds on the lakes, we would see a lot of those, but it's a little bit less this year. Some of the improvement things, new wells, also in the lake septic replacements, docks, back to schools, things like that. So once a permit is completed, once they've completed their full project, they, they have to request for a certificate of compliance, so that's kind of closure of our permit. We saw twenty-nine of those this year, which, which is good. Most of the time, people don't file those until there's a transfer of property, and then they realize they have that. So sometimes it's kind of a scramble, and for most small projects, it's fine, but some, some of the bigger projects that require perpetual conditions and stormwater management, sometimes it can be of a concern to get those, those closed out for them. In addition, we also issued five emergency certifications, so those are for projects that can't go through the normal permitting process. It needs immediate action, so we'll get notification of that. We immediately issue that. We can add some conditions on for protection of resource areas. Most of what we see are related to the highways with fuel spills. We did have one this year recently on Cedar Lake related to a single-family house, a home heating fuel tank outside, so that one's being worked on right now, and then also, we had a driveway washout on Cedar Lake that we had to kind of act immediately so they could remove sediment and stuff. Oh, in addition, so we've been working on, have a lot, and it's not a, a new thing, but a lot of issues related to beavers and flooding, and we do issue, we can, through Border Health as well, issue emergency certifications for that. So there's some different things that people can do, and we're really trying to work with people, and DPW's put one in, these water flow devices. It's a good long-term solution. It's cost-effective, especially when you have a repeat site, and it's a good outcome for the resource area. Allows, you know, people and beavers to live together, so it seems to be working out well at one of our sites, too. We also issue enforcement orders. Sometimes they're necessary. There were seven issued this year. Sometimes it ranges from, you know, someone working without a permit to a violation of a permit. Sometimes, you know, we have other situations where things will come up, where people are just not aware of the permit process, and we can work with them to avoid actually having to issue an enforcement order, and we try to work towards doing that in most situations, but sometimes it is necessary, so we are working through those. One of the big issues that we had this year was with mass DOT on Cedar Lake, so I did include some information about that. We've been working to address that, multiple issues over there, so. We also finalized the, the wetland bylaw regulation review that was ongoing for a little while. We had put that on hold last year and were able to finalize that, address some of town council and board's like men comments there. So that was, we adopted the revised regulations in November, and the goal is to look at those more often, maybe every few to five years. We're still working on some projects in the conservation properties, currently working on an invasive species management plan at Heinz property in early successional habitat. That's something that, looking at grant opportunities through the state so we can continue to manage those properties for the public's use and for wildlife habitat. Been helping with Trails Committee. We have a revised, or they have a revised trail map guide coming out. We helped do all the maps for that, to get that ready, so. Couple small Eagle Scout projects. We've helped with the permitting and design as well. Have an intern that'll be starting, work to kind of reestablish that internship program through Tantascwa. We have a, a young woman who's just gonna start the end of this month for her senior year, so she'll be here for the duration of the school year. We hope to have her kind of work on some of those management projects on our properties, so we can have a little work on that, and then also give her the opportunity to kind of learn a little bit about everything we do to help her figure out what she wants to do, so. We did work on, with DPW, we helped them with some of their educational materials, which is part of their MS four permitting requirements, you know, information to put out on the website for the public, for homeowners, for business owners, et cetera. Conservation Commission hosted their, they cleaned up again, so we had a, a good turnout for that. Doubled the amount last year, not a huge number, but it was an improvement, so.
Doubles double.
Yep, yep, it's good. And again, we're still sponsoring the, the lake monitoring. That was just done at the end of July. The sampling data just came in, and then Slack will put a, put a report together, so.
Busy year. Questions from the board, comments?
That was a good report.
Thanks.
They did a good job of explaining it.
Very good report. One, one thing that Conservation, that you touched on here was, was old audit of conditions that no one's requested a certificate of compliance for. Is there a large number of those out there? Or is it a very small number?
Well, so we have, I think we have one thousand and forty orders of conditions that the, the town has issued. I would estimate, and I don't know, because some of the older permits, it's unclear. I would, I would assume that less than half of them probably have certificates of compliance, so. I mean, I, I don't know, and that's something that we've been trying to work on, too. So Conservation Department never used the permitting software, so we don't have a, a tracking system for all of that, so that's something that, hoping that the new admin and the intern can help get that going, and we can start kind of picking away at those, so.
Well, you basically answered my question. I was gonna, my second follow-up on there was with the new permitting software, will it be easier to track that sort of thing?
Yes.
My second question is, there's, in, in the last year or two, there's been a lot of, or there's been some talk of a dog park somewhere, and, and has the Conservation Commission discussed the possibility on some of, on conservation land? Because people have mentioned conservation land, whether that would be permitted or permissible or stuff. I know in some communities, it is permitted, but.
Yeah, and you'd have to look at each individual property and look at the permitted and allowed uses for each one. So I think some of the issues, so, so to answer your question first, the, the commission hasn't had a discussion about it. I've had some discussions with like the rec department in the past, and that was one of the things that kind of came up on the conservation properties, is what's, what's the intent for the property and what are the allowed uses? So some of the things where that can come, be an issue is where you need fencing, so you need permanent structures to be put up. So most of the time, it's something that has to probably be put into the language when you're developing that CR, but we haven't, we haven't really gone through every property, and we do have smaller properties that don't have conservation restrictions on them, but might be located in neighborhoods or something, so, I mean, it can be explored.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to bring that up, because it's, I know it's something that rec has to work with, with Conservation Commission about, because most of the, most of the parcels that I've heard mentioned for, for future dog park would be, you know, all, you know, under the control of the Conservation Commission. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that that might be something we'd look at in the future year, and in this coming year.
Okay, anything else from the board?
I agree with Mike. I've had a lot of people, just because I was re-elected this year, and that was like a hot topic when I went door to door, because they said, we have all this open space, and the majority of houses that I knocked on their door, they have dogs. Dogs are very popular in Sturbridge, and they want a place where they can run free and not be subject to the leash, you know? And then what I was also gonna add is, it would be nice if one of our trails allowed a dog to be off-leash at the, you know, and you proceed at your own pace, you know, you would be, a sign would be visible, and people would know that this particular trail allows dogs to be on a verbal leash. I've also had that request.
I don't know if all of them have any specific language about dogs being on leashes or not, so have to look at the language.
I think all of our trails right now require a dog to be on a leash.
And that may be part of the CR, or just might be like a, a safety concern, so Trails Committee might implement that on your trail, so. I know on Lead Mine, off-leash is prohibited, because that's also fish and wildlife property.
Yeah, I don't know any trail where it's permitted.
Yeah, I don't either.
Which, which is fine if we had a dog park, because then they can run free, but, you know, it would be nice. We were on the Cape this past weekend, and we went through a beautiful dog park in Falmouth, and it was very heavily populated, and it was right off a main road, you know, so.
Stanton Foundation.
Okay, anything else?
No.
That's great. No problems? Yeah, nothing insurmountable.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Becky.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, next we have town administrators' report.
Thank you. Just a few things this evening. At the last meeting, we had a conversation about the power outages in National Grid coming out to a meeting. I reached out to our representative. He's gonna get some data and put that together on the number of outages, the reasons, those kind of things, their tree maintenance program, and then when he has all that, he'll schedule
To come in?
To come out.
Thank you.
A meeting with the Army Corps this week about Streeter, Streeter Street Rec area. I know that's one of the goals, to see what it takes to get that back open, so I'm gonna meet with the Army Corps this week and see where they are. I think the understanding would be, it would be the town's responsibility to operate, if that was to be.
In the past DCR.
What's that?
I, I think the Department of Conserva, Massachusetts Department of Conservation Recreation had
Well, that's why they closed it, no money.
Constructed the building there and so forth, so.
Oh, that's why they closed it, no money? I thought it was because the lake was, had concerns about, oh, no, no, no.
It was a budget cut. But they spent quite a bit of money building the bathhouse and so forth there.
No, it was always a nice place.
It's, you know, it was a very popular place, and then it was closed, like, because of budget cuts.
So I'm gonna meet with them and see what kind of arrangements could be made and see what has to happen. There's a water bill appeal issue from two thousand and thirteen, Co-Paz versus Sturbridge, that I'll have to go to Boston on September fourth to have the final hearing on. This has been delayed so many times since two thousand and thirteen, so they've, the appeals officer finally said, no more, so. September fourth, if the plaintiff still wants to have the appeal, September fourth, it's a sixty-five-hundred-dollar appeal, so we'll see where it goes, but.
That was the one up on Hawthorne?
Twelve Hawthorne. So that's coming to a conclusion, one way or the other. We got notice that Old Mill Pond, the dam, is insufficient, and it's gonna need to be rehabilitated. That's the one behind the, the multi-tenant building there on Main Street?
Yeah, the mill, yeah.
Subway is. So we just got that letter. We'll have to review what's necessary with that one. We have a letter from Lynch on the tennis courts. After we spoke about it last time, the town's council drafted a letter for me to send, basically saying, you should have known. Lynch came back and said, well, you didn't put anything in the spec, so they're gonna stick to their position and pay for half, so we'll look around and see if we can find half, if the board still wants to do that. We'll bring it back for fin, any final action, but it's kind of where we're at, at this point. The specifications were not clear on what the mix was supposed to be, so. If you have any questions on that. There was a, there was a desire to have a reception for the new town administrator, so September tenth, if that's a date that works for everybody, we can do it then.
The day of the week does that count?
It's a Tuesday. No.
Works for me.
Okay.
Okay, and what were we thinking of? Someone's gotta organize it.
I think that was left to me.
Oh, it's wonderful.
Late afternoon, evening? Is it, is it gonna be like late afternoon, evening type thing?
It'll be an evening thing. You know, the desire was to have my wife there. She's back to work then, so five-thirty, six o'clock to five-forty-five to six, something like that. Probably hour and a half type event.
Yeah, six to eight, five, something like that.
Something like that, yeah. We'll work it out.
Do you like how I, I
Wistful, Jerome.
Get to organize?
It's for you. Why would you play?
Yeah, no, exactly.
Well, we needed his schedule, actually. Be nice if he's there.
Yeah, it's always good. So I'm also the chief purchasing officer for the town, so I completed the first of three classes to get my certification. They don't tell you the grade you got on the test, they just tell you you passed, so. I passed the, the first test of three, and I'll schedule the rest as they become available. Finally, we've been talking to the owner of the RV park on Route fifteen about sewer. As you know, he originally planned to build his own wastewater plant on site. Came back to us about a forced main into the main on Farquhar Road, which his engineer's looking at, and then we talked about with him, what would it take to get the, the town sewer down fifteen to him? Our concern is if he connects right to the forced main, that kind of makes it that much more difficult eventually to get sewer down fifteen if we have this user that's no longer necessary. So we're running numbers both ways. I think there's pros and cons to both, so at the next meeting, we may have some ideas for that, and go from there. Good.
Mary?
No, I understand that it makes, because now you would be removing one of the potential users to bring it down fifteen. On the flip side, the more we have other
On the flip side, the more we have other businesses get on our town services, I think it brings down the bill for the current people, because it's pretty expensive for the sewer users right now.
Right. Yeah, we're in the sewer selling business, so we'd like to get more users.
So that's another pro of letting them tie in.
Because we do have the numbers from Time Bond from before, cost estimates.
And they're revising those.
Right, and the number of butters.
And we got a letter late Friday, CMRC appointees are up, so that will be on your next agenda. That's all I have. And that's my report.
Yeah, because two delegates from the planning board. And then Board of Selectmen or Town Manager appoints a second delegate, as well as the alternate. Yeah, because the board's going to have to get a new one, too, because one of those [inaudible].
Yeah, I'll work with Jeanne on that.
Yeah. And she's back from vacation.
That time of year.
That's right. Summertime.
I'll be away September 10th.
Sending your wife on her own.
Here in the evening.
Your wife's going to come.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request to concur with the appointment of Marcia Wildboob as the Outreach Coordinator for the Council of Aging. Would you like to come down, please? We have all your paperwork, but people at home like to hear. So could you just give a little background on yourself, please?
Sure. So my name is Marcia Wildboob, and I'm born and raised in Southbridge. I've been a resident of Sturbridge for 26 years. My husband of 29 years, myself bought a home on Cedar Lake, where we still currently reside. We've raised three children. They did most of their schooling through the Tantascwa School System. They were fortunate to have opportunities through academic as well as athletics available to them, and happy to say, they are self-sufficient proactive members of the community now. So thank you for that. For the past 14 years, I have worked with seniors and their families in numerous administrative roles. I have experience in navigating health insurances, home healthcare agencies, Meals on Wheels, and advocating for our seniors. I've made numerous relationships. I've maintained those relationships over the years, embedded in the community. I look forward to assisting our seniors with care, compassion, and providing them what they need, and building relationships as well. So I want to thank you all for the opportunity, Mr. Bridges, Leslie Wong, and I'm ready to get started and looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments from the board?
Well, looking at your resume, you look like the perfect candidate for the...
Well, I thank you. I am looking forward to it. The seniors are the tug on my heartstrings, and I work well with them, so...
But I must say, the last person that had this job was really good at it, so you've got big shoes to fill.
Don't blush, Leslie.
Well, I thank you.
Yeah, and I agree with Mike. I think her resume is excellent. I also know Marcia outside of this context, because our children went to school together, and I think she's going to be a big asset to the senior center, and I'm happy to have her on board.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, anyone willing to make a motion, then, to concur with the appointment?
I'll make a motion to concur with the appointment of Marcia Wildboob as the Outreach Coordinator for the Council on Aging.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'll look forward to seeing you.
Or not.
I'll look forward to Mary running by.
That's right.
Thank you.
I'll stop in sometime for water or something.
Wonderful. Thank you.
That's right, you're not old enough yet.
I am.
Me, too. Okay, next we have a request to accept a donation from Richard Kaufman into the Police Youth Account in the amount of $500. Any questions? Comments?
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation, $500, in the amount of $500 received from Richard Kaufman to go into the youth account.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, then we have a letter of resignation from Alyssa Splain, from the Department of Public Works as the Administrator Assistant. Any questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Alyssa Splain from the DPW, effective immediately.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, then we have a request about allocation of vacation time. Didn't we approve this before? No? No, she got money years ago when she filled in for the... I just thought it was. Town accountant. Okay.
He brought it to our attention a few months ago.
That's, okay, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah, okay, thank you. So this wasn't new?
No.
I mean, brand new?
No.
Right, okay. I knew there was a discussion about this at one time, and I... Yeah, thanks, Mary.
Yep, I'll make a motion...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead. I...
No, go ahead.
I want a discussion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve Jeff Bridges' recommendation that Barbara Berry receives supplemental vacation in accordance with the memorandum dated August 15.
Second? Okay, let me just get that down. Mary, gee, and Priscilla. Okay, I am not going to vote in favor of this. I think three weeks' request is too much. I know Barbara worked hard. She's not the only person that worked hard. Other department head people worked hard. Plus Barbara is in a department where the accountant, and she has two others down in the office downstairs, which can help carry the load. So I am personally not going to vote for this request. Any other comments? Okay, all in...
Yeah. I also had to struggle with it, but I will be voting in favor of it. Some of the issues that you had, and everybody... There was a lot of people that, you know, had to work on, you know, this past...
A lot of people carried the load. Don't forget, we did have an interim working. It wasn't like we were totally without someone. The last time Barbara had a request, we definitely did not have a town accountant. When the town accountant left, it took us a while to get one, so that was a different circumstance. Okay, any more discussion?
I can appreciate both of your positions on it. I, too, would prefer knowing in advance when... Rather than after the fact, it's good to know upfront before. Have somebody come forward and say, "Look, I'm handling more." Maybe you compensate them more. But then, once it's done, you know, we don't have an opportunity to be more proactive. So that would be my only comment, that it's better done at the front end.
I would agree, and if there's those types of vacancies again, I think those are conversations you need to be prepared for in advance.
I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there could also be keeping track of what's been done. I know the tree warden, when we had the money that was allocated at town meeting to take down so many trees, he actually kept track of the extra work hours that it did entail and everything. Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Okay, all opposed? Okay, four to one. How many weeks does Barbara have now, do you know?
I don't know. I would imagine whatever the maximum is per year, given her longevity.
Well, that's a question. How many years she been here?
Twenty, twenty-something.
Okay, so she gets at least 20 or 22 days, which is four weeks, so this is now seven weeks. She should have been a teacher. Only a teacher can say that.
I was just about to say, you can get away with that, because you're an educator, a retired educator.
Okay, next we have the painting bids for the Joshua Hyde Library. Okay, any questions on this?
Well, the recommendation is to accept the proposal of Travers Painting for $11,350.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to that effect, to accept the recommendation of the library director, and I presume that's the recommendation of the town administrator as well.
That's correct.
Can you use your second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, next we have the contracts for revaluation services. Can you, Jeff, explain?
Yes. Town assessor Anne Murphy came to me a couple weeks ago, stating that the Board of Assessors went through the process of recruiting and soliciting proposals for the revaluation, went through the selection process, awarded the bid, but a step was missed where it never got to the Board of Selectmen for approval. The initial first years of services complete, and these were both three-year contracts or three-year service agreements. So at this point, after conversations with the town council, we would ask that you accept these as of the date that they awarded the contract to the different vendors, and that would kind of true it up.
Okay, any questions?
I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Ian, I had one question. Do you want to come down, please? Okay, just reading through on the profile of Sturbridge, when they're listing all the property code numbers and descriptions and parcel counts, under mobile homes, it has 13. Is that not counting the Kelly Road?
Correct.
How come?
Because the Kelly Road property is treated separately. In the software system, it's assessed as one parcel, and the mobile homes are assessed as outbuildings under sites, so they don't get counted as a mobile home for the parcel counts.
Yeah.
You know, it would skew the numbers. Yeah, it would skew the data.
Yeah. Stood out.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Are the other mobile home communities counted as one?
Yes, it's counted as a parcel. So if there's a property, say it's a piece of land that has a mobile home, a single mobile home on it, those are counted... That's where the 13 comes in. If it's a section, like a park of mobile homes, it's counted as one.
Yeah.
You know, so they don't... It's because of the way the DOR is set up for how we classify the parcel. It's always done as the piece of land and what's on the land. So that's why the mobile homes always kind of look like a different...
For example, the mobile home community that's behind what used to be the mobile station, near Friendly's.
Yes, that is counted as a mixed-use parcel. So that's another, another...
Okay, okay.
It's an O1.
I'm asking too many questions.
It's an O310, so in other words, it's a commercial parcel, and then it has a residential component to it. So the mobile homes on that, it's counted as one. It's not each individual.
That's what my question was.
Yeah, it's very specific on how we have to break them down.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question, too. On the vacant and accessory land, 653 parcels. I thought that was a lot. The majority, or some of... If you know, what percentage of these parcels are for sale, or...
For sale? I wouldn't know what's...
I just thought that was a very high number.
No, we have a lot of vacant land, and that includes, you know...
It doesn't include our open space.
No, because those are 200 codes. So it's anything in a 1,300, buildable, potential buildable, and unbuildable. So that includes any of those little snippets of land that aren't buildable, that's included in that number. So we do have a high number of vacant parcels, but...
Yeah, no, it just stuck out, and I thought that was really high, because I mean, a commercial building for only 185.
Yeah.
So it's almost triple the amount of commercial space.
We do have a lot of vacant land. But like you say, a lot of those are like little snippets, and they're all counted in there.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion, then, to concur with the already approved contracts?
So if I may...
Oh, Jeff?
It would basically, staff is requesting the Board of Selectmen accept the proposal from Real Estate Research Consultants for Real Property Valuation Services for three years, and accept the proposal from Bishop and Associates for Personal Property Valuation Services for three years, effective December 19, 2018.
Gee, who wants to have said that?
Actually, it's Bishop and Associates, it's for the real estate, and RRC is for the personal property.
Okay.
It's for the record.
Switch back.
Right.
Andrea will fix it.
Okay, who wants to make that motion, then? So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request to concur with the appointment of Gary Gruswald and Ryan Holloway as indefinite temporary help for the Department of Public Works. Butch, would you like to say anything? Yes.
Originally, we had hired two employees for the DPW, and we hired another third one this year, because the Board of Health was looking for somebody at the recycle center. One of them left after a week, and two college kids went back to school, so now we're back to zero. So we weren't going to advertise for this so late, but through word of mouth, Gary stepped up. Gary used to work for the town. You may know him. He did the mowing last summer, and he's worked there for other years. And then the other applicant declined the position a couple hours ago, so all we have is Gary. So we're very happy to have Gary back.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, Gary, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Somebody want to make a motion, then, to appoint Gary Gruswald as an indefinite temporary help for the DPW?
So, you go ahead.
Yeah. I'm going to make sure we point to Gary Gruswald as indefinite temporary help.
And I get to second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Welcome back. Thank you, welcome. Take care, Butch.
Right.
Okay, next we have old business. Priscilla?
Old business? No. I'm trying to say, no, not old.
Chase?
No.
Mike?
No old business.
Mary? I just wanted to say, I meant to say the last meeting, and I forgot, Chase, myself, and Jeff did have an opportunity to drive around Sturbridge and look at various locations where we could enhance our beautification, the triangles by intersection of 20 and 131, as well as along Route 20, and I think we were all on the same page that we want to do more. So I was very uplifted by that drive.
Absolutely. I kept thinking of you every time I go through the intersection, because I knew you were leaving on that Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have any old business. You have listed on... You have listed on the old business policy of host community agreements for marijuana retailers. Jeff, would you like to?
Sure.
Explain?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the last meeting, we presented a policy, uh, that forms the basis of negotiating the host community agreements. There was some desire to have some additional conversation here this evening about that, and maybe some specifics from each Board of Selectmen member, so we put it back on the agenda. We would ask, at the end of the conversation, if the policy is acceptable, that we adopt, and that way we can begin negotiations.
Okay, comments from the board? Mary?
I have a couple of questions. How did we arrive at the four thousand dollar escrow amount for legal services?
That's from the attorney, based upon their experience with these agreements and their hourly rate.
Okay.
Kinda seemed sufficient from them. Any remaining would be returned.
Right. So, I'm sure, so it says the balance of unused funds to be returned to the applicant if the HCA is signed, or if the HCA is unsigned, that's not there, but obviously, if we don't end up entering into an agreement, they, they are also gonna get their money back.
Of course.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know if we need, want to arrive at that. So, if it goes in excess of four thousand, is that when the three hundred kicks in?
That's correct.
Okay.
Priscilla?
Um, this is in the policy, um, I, I have to ask this question because I, I have the policy here, but I'm not see, the, uh, the bylaw, but I'm not seeing it here. Do we have any provision for delivery and cafes?
For, say that.
Delivery? Delivery of marijuana?
I, I don't know.
Cafes, that's the newest thing that has hit the, the, the.
I know the cafe issue.
This week.
Yeah.
The cafes, and also delivery. Do we have anything pro-con or otherwise that allows it or prohibits it? Because I would think it would be in this agreement. And that was one concern I had that I kept reading about this week, and I'm not, I didn't see it, I, I, I looked as well as I could, I didn't see anything in this relating to it one way or another, but neither does our policy, neither does our bylaw. And I wanted to raise that.
We can check with the attorney.
Okay.
I know the cafes are just, there's a, there's a different license for those.
Correct, but delivery, what about, like, for example, if you open a retail shop, what's to stop you from doing delivery?
Right, Uber, you know.
You know, and, and do we allow it, that's, you know, what, you know, that's the other thing, so. And also, my other question from the last time I asked was, um, if the costs, the impact costs exceed what we're being given, what happens?
Well, and I, I think what we would need to do is reflect that in the host community agreement, that if there is unforeseen impacts or impacts beyond the scope of the impact fee, that, that would be a subject for a reopener on the agreement.
Okay, thanks. Will you check on what they would be?
Yeah, we're gonna check on those, and the cafe.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so then.
Yeah, the onsite consumption is a new issue.
Mm-hmm. And I don't see, I went through the bylaw today, and I don't see that it's addressed. And maybe it's addressed in a different way, I don't know, but I don't see that it's addressed, and I think, remember, Mary, uh, so I've been, and we talked about what could be allowed and not allowed?
Right.
I would think that what we said would prohibit this, but I'm not sure.
Right, right, no, I think she raises excellent point, I would agree with Priscilla's concerns.
Whether or not the bylaw is broad enough or narrow enough to either allow or prohibit onsite consumption.
Right. Thank you.
We can check.
Chase?
I'd really, I'd, I'd really like to see some type of money allocated for police training for impairment, you know, yeah, this is kind of a new thing, you know, picking up, you can't really blow into a.
Breath will.
So, some type of training, you know, money being allocated for that, I think would be positive.
And in the, we're just looking at the policy right now, right?
Right.
Okay.
This is kind of.
A discussion of everything, because with the reopener review clause, addressing more favorable terms, I would like that to be made clear, that it's at the sole discretion of the town without approval by the licensee. I don't want both parties to have to agree that we're gonna reopen.
That'd be like a most favored nations clause, where we would, we would see the benefit of someone else's agreement.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know where, are we moving on to the HCAs and commenting on them? Or what?
Well, this is.
Chase, you want to, are we only just looking at our policy right now?
Well, right now, we're just looking.
Just looking.
All right.
Yeah, I, yeah.
And when we get the questions answered.
I think, yeah.
It'll come back, and then we'll.
Okay.
And then we can get.
They have more to pull up.
I agree.
Up and down the boat.
I, I agree, I think it'll impact.
Those points are important.
It'll impact the agreement. Yeah.
Okay, now, your question, Mary, was?
Oh, no, I didn't know if we were also commenting on the sample host agreements that we got. Like, I, I didn't, I wasn't satisfied, for example, with the language on reopener review clause in that first host agreement, because it's very vague as to whether or not, um, we have the, we can take the initiative and have the right to reopen it.
Re, reopen negotiations, or re?
Yeah, the whole idea of this, um, it's paragraph seven, I think the language could be stronger in terms, pay, uh, one ninety-seven. I think the language could be stronger in terms of the town.
Oh, that's one of the agree, that's, that's one of the agreements, though, we're not discussing that, right?
No, but I thought, like.
Yeah.
When Chase had said, we made it an agenda item to, like, go over the host agreements and to let our town administrator know what provisions we liked in these samples, and which ones we didn't like, or we wanted to have stronger language, and I think the language could be stronger in seven. And I also don't want to put the onus on the town to, um, know whether or not the licensee has, you know, um. I don't want us to have to do our homework and approach the licensee and say, oh, no, you opened another facility in, you know, Shrewsbury, could we see that? I want that to be an affirmative duty of the licensee to come forward to us and say, we've ended into another agreement, and to show it, because otherwise, we're gonna have to, like, be using due diligence all the time to see if they're expanding in other communities, and I think that would be hard to do.
Mandatory reporting.
Mandatory reporting, thank you, you reduced it to two words.
Remedy is key.
And I have a couple of other comments. I don't know about, I didn't see it in this one, but the right of the licensee to assign to a successor in the event that they sell their business. Um, I would like them, the new owner, to have to come forward and negotiate their own host agreement. And typically, in a contract, you have, unless you say you don't, you have the, it binds the future successors, signees, et cetera. But personally, I think it would be good if a new owner came forward, that we negotiate a new host agreement with them. We might decide we want to carry on the same one, or not, depending upon, but I don't want, um, the licensee to be able to sell to successors and successor. I mean, I know it kind of surfaced with, um, our, um, solar panel, because the, the group we approved, by the time it came back to us, they had already sold.
To the one that we didn't want.
The one that, and I believe Priscilla was more representative, and you did a lot of work, actually, you and your committee.
Yeah.
And it was the one you didn't want, and that's who they ended up selling to, and it was in the contract that they could.
Yeah, you've got a good point on this, I like your point.
So.
I would support that easy.
So, are you saying that, that under, uh, uh, Procedures, paragraph sixteen, there should be a clause in there saying, that's what we want?
Well, it could, I don't know if it has to be in the policy, I'm just giving comments on.
Yeah, well.
Other host agreements, and there's a void there, I didn't see it in one of them.
Maybe it should be in the policy.
If, if we're gonna have a policy that, that all of the host agreements include a clause, or that they.
Yeah.
That, that, that there has to be annual, um, update, updates, and, and some of the other things you just commented on, we should list it in, we should list these in our policy.
I would agree with that.
Some of those things are listed in sixteen, like, annual reporting on compliance and things like that. But we can't, we might want to expand on that a bit, but.
I don't want to be.
Better be, no, better to be more specific than vague.
Yeah.
And then my other one, and then I'll let somebody else take the floor, but on page two oh seven, I don't know if this is a different host agreement, or if it's the same one that I commented on before, but there's a very strong language in favor of the licensee. Paragraph twenty, should the town enter into an agreement with another adult retailer that requires payments that are proportionately lower than this one, Sections eight and nine of this HC shall be null and void, and the party shall negotiate a good fee. That's very strong language, you know, in favor of the licensee, I don't know if that's in all of them, but I think that we could foresee a situation where the two host agreements are different.
Mm-hmm.
And I wouldn't want to be required to come up with new payments that it's null and void. Maybe it's a consideration that we take into account, but one licensee may be very capitalized and be able to afford more. Another one might be a smaller establishment and, you know, not able to do that, so. So, I, I don't, I think that was put in by, um, a town that, you know, really wanted. This, this was some very good negotiating on behalf of the attorneys for the licensee, and I, I personally wouldn't want to see it in that fashion in ours.
There is some press on the host community agreements at the state level, where there's hearings on whether or not the towns are being too aggressive in the host community agreement, so there is some, there may be some regulatory language on impacts have to be impacts.
Right.
Rather than ability to pay.
Right.
Right. So.
But, but I, I agree, and I've been following that as well, but the larger the establishment, the bigger they have, the bigger impact they would also have in terms of traffic, and, you know, if somebody having hundreds of customers a day is going to be different than another one that has, you know, a handful, let's say, so, I think they kind of go hand in hand, too.
Right.
Yeah, it, I mean, it goes back to the principle of being fair and equitable, if there's a smaller establishment, they shouldn't have to pay as much as a larger establishment.
Yeah, it's all relative.
Yeah.
So, you have all those notes, too?
Are we, are we using those notes to amend the policy, or just as negotiating points?
Policy, I think, first.
Policy.
I think the policy.
Some of them dealt with the policy.
Okay.
Because we need some answers to that policy, too, so.
So, we'll go back and get those answers.
Then.
Bring it back.
Back.
Again.
Right.
Good.
Charles. Okay, anything else on those?
Wonderful.
Okay, new business, Priscilla?
Um, I do, um, in the news every day, you hear about that triple E mosquito, and the virus and all, and there are two confirmed cases in the state, but a triple E infected mosquito was found in East Brookfield, which is pretty close. Do we do anything where we offer any kind of spraying or anything for those who choose to have it?
Yeah, we have the central mass.
Yeah, is that it? Is that still available?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go right online and, um.
Can we put that on our website?
Yes, um, mosquito spraying.
And how they can access it?
Yep, we can put that on the website and get some information out.
Because we pay so much each year into it.
Right.
So, it's still available.
That's central mass, who does that?
Mosquito control.
Central mass.
That's what they had last year, Central Mass Mosquito Control Project.
Okay.
Now, they, I know they did it in the beginning of the season, I'm not sure if they still do it, I don't know. I know they did it in the beginning.
Okay.
The other thing is that I was on the website, um, over the weekend, and I accessed old minutes from, from conservation. I went on today, all the old minutes, whether it's conservation, planning, us, or zoning, are off. And when you go to the spot that says two thousand seventeen or two thousand sixteen and before, it pops up an error on all four of those. Um, and I was on there this weekend, and I got what I needed, but I went back to check on something today, and I couldn't, and I kept doing it, and then I went to other, others, they're all the same, they're giving me that error message.
We'll check.
So, okay, thanks, that's it.
Okay, Chase?
No, no.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
I just have a question, and, and I'm sorry if I'm not up to date on this, but I know at town meeting, we approved of having an agency come in and look at our job classifications, and what, what is the status on that, Digna?
That's about, the RFP is about two-thirds written.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, I just didn't know where we were on that.
And I should have, if I may, and I should have mentioned this, the RFP for the senior center feasibility study is due back on the twenty-third.
Excellent. Is that Friday?
Yeah, that's this week.
Friday. Friday at eleven.
Yeah.
We had the walkthrough last week, which had about a dozen firms come in.
Okay, and I have no new business correspondence, like?
Where's the list? Should be here. What page it is on? Two forty-three, okay, that's. Okay, uh, correspondence, August seventh, two thousand nineteen, uh, we received a letter from Corporate Environmental Advisors regarding Phase Five, uh, uh, remedy operations, uh, and that's, uh, for one twenty-two, one thirty Main Street, Route one thirty-one. And then on August twelfth, uh, we're, uh, communication from, from Charter Communications, uh, up, regarding upcoming changes, and again, that's changes in, uh, NBA League Pass and Spectrum pay-per-view high-definition. And we have another letter from Charter Communications dated August fourteenth regarding, uh, the, uh, actually, a decrease in rates, uh, a twenty-dollar E, uh, decrease in rates for a spectrum receiver, and a cable card is a two-dollar reduction, if anybody uses cable cards these days. So, uh, and that's the communication for the month of August.
Okay, anyone else have any other communication?
Well, it's water under the table now, but I did get, and I think others got some, um, emails of endorsement for the school committee, which is too bad, but.
Other than that, no.
Okay, approval of minutes, the August fifth, two thousand nineteen meeting.
I've got.
Priscilla?
No, I'll let him, Mike's started, let him start.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay, go ahead, you start it.
Uh, page, well, page four of the minutes, page two fifty-one of our packet, at the very top of the page, cross out the, uh, the N.
The what?
After East Brimfield, uh, D-A-M, no N after, D-A-M.
I'm, is it dam?
Dam.
D-A-M.
D-A-M is dam, not damned. Damn.
That other one's like, damn Yankees.
Okay, one of them is a curse, the other one's, the other one's a, uh, structure that holds back water.
Water.
The, uh, uh, the appointment of planning board member, not planning commission member, on that same page.
Yeah, that's my bad.
The rest of that paragraph looks fine, it's just, change the word commission to board. Those are my comments.
Priscilla?
Andrea, I can email you this, if it's easier, but. Um, Andrea, I can email you this, if it's easier, but on the top of page six, uh, the end of the paragraph, right before it says motion at the top of the page?
Okay.
Okay, Selectwoman Jimmies referenced the house, the house next to the town hall where negotiations had gone on for a while, and then it went to the ATM or the annual town meeting. You want me to, um.
I'm at the top of page six, right?
Yeah, this goes at the end of that paragraph, right before motion.
Oh, you have to add.
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want me to email it to you?
Do you have it written there?
I do, as a matter of fact. If you can read my writing, you can have it.
Yeah, that's fine. You don't have to remember to email me.
Okay, that's fine. The other thing, I, and I'm just asking this question, and I have to ask Selectman Dowling this. At the end of that, where it's under old business, I don't recall that I was the one that brought up the traffic study. I think it was Selectman Dowling.
It was.
Am I right?
It was.
It was you, yeah.
Okay.
And where it says, "And she," see that sentence, that should say Selectwoman Dowling. And then at the end of the sentence, it says, "And she," that would be me. I'm the one who asked about the status of the eighteen-wheelers.
Right.
I didn't ask about the study. Selectman Dowling did. You follow me?
Yeah.
That sentence should read Selectman Dowling, not Jimmies.
Stated.
At the bottom?
Yeah.
Yeah, Selectman Dowling stated that there was a study done around Memorial Day for Fakar Road, and I wanted to know about the status of that. And Priscilla.
Yes.
Jimmies wondered.
Wondered.
The issue of the eighteen-wheelers.
Correct.
It's kind of like a.
So rather than she, you could just insert Selectman.
Because it wasn't Selectman Dowling that wondered about that. It was me, but she raised the point.
Yeah. Okay.
That's it.
I had one, too. Are you, did you already?
I'm all.
Chase, you're all set? I could be mistaken, but, um, on the, um, parking lot, I actually thought I made both motions. One, I knew was going to get defeated, but I wanted the owners to know what the position was. But I thought it was actually me that made both motions on the, on the, um, parking lot. I thought so, too. Because I said, "Hold on, I've got two motions." One got defeated. And maybe, if, if we don't know, maybe we can just check the tape. I don't know about Chase. And I think you might have seconded it, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh. So you made both. Yeah, and, and Chase seconded it. I just remembered, because I knew one was going to fly and one wasn't. So. Cover yourself. Yeah, I covered myself.
Okay, anything else? Is there a motion then to approve his amendment?
So, no.
Is your second? Any discussion? All in favor? And one abstention.
Sorry, who, can you repeat the first? Oh, four in favor, and one abstention. I wasn't here. Oh. But who said so moved? Priscilla.
Priscilla.
I didn't.
Yeah, so motion.
And then Chase. You meant the really first time.
Chase seconded, okay.
I'm flustered. It is in form, and they all left. Okay, we have a request for executive session. Mike, do you have the?
It's, oh, it's in the, uh, it's the wording. "To consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate property if the chair declares that a, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town."
So declared. Okay, is your second to the motion?
Second.
Priscilla, how do you vote?
Yes. Are we returning into open session?
No.
No. Okay.
Tack that on.
Tack that on.
So, yes, and.
We will not reconvene in open session. Okay, Chase? Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes. There.